Ready? Here you go. Good summer.
Oh, stop trying to look for boards.
Yeah, good, good.
Good morning, everyone. We will call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Public information notices as required under Notice by Law 144-2007. The public is advised that council's intention to adopt the following at its October 7th, 2022 meeting. Council will amend their December meeting schedule to reflect the December committee of the whole date being December 6th at 9:00 a.m. At this time, I've asked everyone to rise and Counselor Smith to read the last one, please.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Medi people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora, let these principles guide us in our decision making.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Declaration of keen interest in general nature thereof. Any member of council wishes to declare on items either on today's agenda or from a meeting which a member was not in attendance, see none. Ask for reading of Resolution Number One, please.
Thank you, your worship. Resolution Number One, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Goss, that the minutes from the last regular committee meeting of the whole held September 13th, 2022, be confirmed as written and filed.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Deputations. Today, we welcome Randy Nickel. Randy, I'd invite you to come to the podium. The microphone doesn't project, but it records, so we'll hear you clearly with your regular voice. So, welcome, Randy.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Ingerd and Counselors. Appreciate having the time to meet with you this morning. I'm here this morning to talk to you about immigration streams for employees and particularly the city of Canora's glaring absence on the recent expansion of the Northern and Rural Immigration Pilot Program. I'm going to just go back and forth to a couple of things that I've found in the last couple of years that I've worked over, worked over stuff and trying to solidify the staffing in my restaurant and helping others in our community to do the same. The Northern Policy Institute report labeled "Come North: Population Growth in Ontario Northern Regions, Studied and Conducted and Published January 14, 2021," has determined if we wish to maintain our historical healthy ratio dependence to workers, Ontario's northern regions would need to retain everyone who is currently here and attract some 8,100 additional people every year for the next 20 years. In order to just limit the fall in our ratio of dependence to working age people to match the expected Ontario level by 2041, Ontario, Northern Ontario, needs some 1,700 new people a year for the next 20 years. That's 34,000 new northerners to slow our decline. So, that's from the Northern Policy Institute. They have another report out as well in regards to this. I just wanted to read from the Honorable Sean Fraser's public announcement about the expansion of the areas for the Rural and Northern Immigration Pilot Program. And as rural and northern communities face unique economic and demographic challenges and the expansion of, the short form is RNP, announced that it makes it much easier for communities to fill their critical labor market needs. They also expand the community boundaries so that employers in remote areas can access the program, helping to support the economic development and growth in smaller communities across country. So, now, I just wanted to kind of come back. I'd like to first point out that at my business, we have a team of very good, experienced, knowledgeable, and hardworking staff. These include a great core of students who work part-time and expand their hours in the summer with us. Over the past five years, it seems as if it has been terribly difficult to fill positions in our business. We have been able to rely on our existing team to work longer days and more hours than they are comfortable with, and they are getting burnt out. You've probably heard this and seen this in many other businesses and more particularly with our restaurants in town closing certain days of the week. I have turned to the Temporary Foreign Worker Program to help elevate my staffing levels. And in the last 13 years, I've applied for 13 temporary foreign workers, and I've been granted 11 through the LMIA option, which is a labor market assessment. So, it's a lengthy, it's a lengthy process and a costly process. But I would have to say that, for the most part, it has been a great help to our recruitment. Most recently, we have looked at another line of foreign workers coming in, and that's the Frank Phone Mobility Program, and we will have two employees from Morocco soon joining us. I have found or learned that when we are bringing these staff to Canada, they truly are thankful and are extremely grateful to be here. The next thing for them, though, is permanent residency. All of the people I brought here have been allowed to work for me for two years. But after the first year or once 12 months hits or 1,560 hours, then they're allowed to start applying to become a permanent resident of Canada. And this is what really starts to drive them. Unfortunately for them, and of course, my business, I've had five of my original seven temporary foreign workers leave to Saskatchewan. Saskatchewan Provincial Nominee Program guarantees these people permanent residency within a short period of time, but guarantees them the permanent residency. When working for me in Ontario, it becomes a draw. So, let's get back to the Northern and Rural Immigration Program. It was my understanding, it was copied from the Atlantic Canada Immigration Program, which was a pilot a number of years ago, and now it's become permanent. Although Canora had applied through LOVIC in 2019 to be part of the Northern Rural Immigration Pilot Program, we were not chosen as one of the participants. Eleven cities across Canada, including five in Northern Ontario, were invited. Those cities were Sudbury, Timmins, Sault Ste. Marie, and Thunder Bay. I must be missing one, and North Bay. The Rural and Northern Immigration Program is just announced, has just announced an expanded catchment area, as referenced in Sean Fraser's remarks here. This applies to all the original cities in the Ontario Northern and Rural... Sorry. This applies to all the original cities that were in the Northern Ontario group for the Rural and Northern Immigration Program. Now, for Thunder Bay, this now includes the Rainy River District, right through to Rainy River, but also includes Ighnes, Dryden, and Sulucout. Glaringly absent from this expansion is Canora, Red Lake, Vermilion Bay, Nester Falls, and Soonaros. I firmly believe that my business and many of the businesses in Canora and surrounding area would benefit tremendously if we were allowed into the Rural and Northern Immigration Pilot Program. I have been advocating and writing letters and talking with so many officials over the last three years. I hope that the city might be concerned with us being left off this expansion. I think that the Rural and Northern Immigration Program, as I mentioned, was Saskatchewan. The benefit to us, if we were involved, would allow people that we identify that would like to relocate and work here, basically guarantees them permanent residency. They still have things that they have to follow through. So, I'm here this morning frustrated for my last three years of knowledge gaining and turning over rocks to find opportunities to solidify my staffing component. I was hoping that maybe council might be interested in possibly writing... No. Draw a blank, I'll bring it back in a second. I'm hoping that maybe either between the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses, maybe we need to come up with a writing letter campaign to the federal minister, or maybe a council resolution, if you so thought might be of a benefit. So, that's my, that is my presentation. I was hoping to get here this morning. Immigration is a very boring topic. However, most of you here this morning might have just been hearing some of this stuff for the first time. There's a plethora of opportunities for us, yet they all seem to come to an abrupt stop for a lot of, a lot of the people that I've been working to bring here. And I'm hoping that maybe with your input or ideas, maybe something can come out of this meeting today that might be able to help convince Mr. Fraser that the rest of Northwestern Ontario is as important as the first part. I did mean to print off a map, but I can send that along. When you look at this map of Northern Ontario with expanded borders for the immigration program, when I first saw it, I almost cried, and I thought, it can't be true. As I dabbed down and drilled down a little bit further, and I noticed the communities that were involved. Megan and Allison have tremendously helped employers over the last few years, getting us together to talk about staff shortages, ways around it. Two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I was invited through Allison and Megan to participate in the Northern Ontario group of people, that they talked a tremendous amount about this stuff. And that's when I first found out this pilot program had expanded. And when I thought it was to Rainy River District, I thought, oh, that's good for them. And then, middle of last week, when I saw it was Sulucout, Dryden, and Ighnes, and I thought, how could they do it? So, again, my understanding is there have been no consultation with any of these expanded areas. I don't know why we were left off. And, you know, as a businessperson in this community, I have been working really, really hard on this for the last three years. I can go on and speak about this stuff for hours and hours and days, but I will stop at that point in case anybody has questions or comments, or if they just want to leave it at this point.
So, I'll open it to members of council, if they have questions of Randy. Counselor Smith, please.
Thanks, Randy, for your presentation, and I know it's been an ongoing problem. And you've raised that issue before. There actually is a resolution, or a report to council today, our last report at the end of the day about a resolution that we're going to submit that outlined all of your concerns going forward. And when you've asked the questions about why we've been omitted, what has been the response?
Those questions have just been recently. I think the resolution came from maybe one of the staff who, when I brought it to their attention, they were... I guess it was the discussion of the morning. Last week, we had an open house for the Frank Phone Mobility Program at A&amp;W, and I had sent Megan a note that morning, or maybe the morning before, that said, oh, Dryden, Sulucout, and Ighnes are included in the expansion as well. And when I got in there, kind of like, so we've been talking about, tweeting, talking to people about bringing French-speaking people to our community. So, I haven't had an answer. I've reached out to somebody in Fort Frances today, and we don't know, we don't know how we got on, and we don't know if you were an employer phoning us right now, we wouldn't know how to help you out. I do know that through the, through this program, there's certain criteria that are set up by the communities, and it sounds to me as if whatever community was the initial community, so Thunder Bay, they identified, you know, we need frontline employees, we need supervisors, managers, physicians, vets. So, that is what the rest of the groups would be able to apply for. So, it's not just general, anybody who wants to come and work can work, but each community specifically denotes their thing. So, again, to your question, I know Megan had reached out to Dryden as well, and I'm not quite sure what their information was. But startling to me that, you know, Canora requested to be part of this group in 2019, and I have written a number of letters to the various ministers, because, again, immigration, I think there's four departments, so each person is able to bounce you around to the next group because none of them are...
Have you spoken with Eric Millen?
I have spoken to Eric. I've also brought this to his attention earlier this year and again. So, the minister's response, and it was probably misinterpreted, maybe, the minister's response is that it's a test. They're hoping that in the next couple of years, they'd be able to roll it out across Canada, which I'm kind of like, I don't understand why Northern and Rural Immigration Pilot would be rolled out across Canada because there's so many other things. So, you know, the other, the other interesting thing that I did find was, you know, listed on the list of smallest to largest communities, Canora and Elliott Lake are the only two that were not granted expanded areas as well. So, I kind of thought that was a little, I'm not going to say suspect, but...
Thanks, Randy.
Anyone else? Randy, could you provide Heather with your presentation?
I will.
Hard copy or email?
Perfect. I'll email it later. I'll email it later.
Yep, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, for bringing this forward.
That's right.
As Counselor Smith indicated, we'll be discussing this program this morning.
Perfect. And I did note that, sorry, in my, you'll see under a big long dash is a whole bunch of other kind of speaking points, not speaking points, but these are things I've learned over years. And I know that you guys have already put a resolution forward in regards to something like this, when I was talking to Adam Smith probably two years ago. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Michael Roma from RC Strategies to present the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Welcome, Michael. If you can hear us, you can start, or Heather, does you... There he was, gone.
He was there and now he's gone.
All right. Well, we can imagine if he's not here, then we will move on. All right, we're going to move on. So, next up is the August 2022 financial statements. And Ryan, welcome you to do your presentation, please.
Thank you. Good morning, council. Today, we have the August 31st, 2022 financial statements for us. I'd like to say there's not too much change, not much significant change from the July financial statements. We're still in a similar position with being underspent in some areas. Some of the significant differences remain the same, police commission over budget due to the strategic plan, roads budgets under budget due to the allocations of disaster relief accounts, doxymorph spending is under winter control, potentially could be over, shortfall will be pulled from the reserves. We have some savings in our, we have some positions, savings due to vacant positions, operations, and development services. Sewer and water, under budget in expenses. Some user fees were also under budget, which will catch up with the accrual in December. Similar with our expenses, insulation waste being under, and our user fees and solid waste are starting to catch up. And then, we have our emergency measures table at the bottom. This is reported spending as of September 27th with respect to the emergency measures related to expenditures.
So, Ryan, that number's a little bit deceiving. Could we maybe take this opportunity to provide council and the public with a high-level update on the disaster relief application that we're putting in?
Right. So, the difference between what goes forward for the application and what we're seeing here is the eligible expenses. So, within this, this is our accounting of all the expenses we, as a city, have spent to date, which may be a little bit different than what we're submitting for the claim because of the eligible expenses. So, this may include regular time spent, employees' regular time spent, debris cleanup, or things of that nature, which may not be eligible in the claim because it's only incremental. So, overtime would be eligible. And this does not represent the future costs that we've earmarked going forward with the claim. Was there anything else that you were...
You know, I think if you could just, you're going to submit the application this week, and the number that we're submitting for is quite a bit higher than this. So, I think it's important that people understand that these are the expenses incurred to date. We still do anticipate a lot more expenses to be incurred. I believe in excess of $2 million is going to be...
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we're expecting a lot more in the future costs to come through still, yes.
So, we're putting in, yeah, it was about 2.04 million?
Yeah, roughly 2 million, 2.1.
Okay. So, that's what we're putting into the province, all, everything included. We are still running a parallel process through insurance, which we're waiting for the adjuster, and we're waiting for that to, you know, to... I just know that I've received a lot of questions from the media and some questions from members of council, but, you know, sort of the water's down. What is this cost to us? And we're finally in a position where we can sort of say it's in that $2.1 million ballpark. And of course, you know, as Ryan said, those are the eligible expenses, so that's not including some of the ineligible expenses. We are still running a parallel process with the insurance company to see what comes back there. But I just, you see how different that is compared to the invoices that we have to date. So, we still have some big invoices to come in, Pine Phone, as you know, and, yeah, we have some docs as well that need to be inspected. There's just, I think it's important that, we're talking about over $2 million that this has been to the city and really more than that when you include what's ineligible. So, I just wanted to go through that because I think it's important, and we're very close to submitting that to disaster relief. And then, we will wait for their processing.
Correct.
Anything else you wanted to add, Ryan? I just thought it's our first opportunity to share that conversation with councils.
No, no, that would be all.
Counselor Smith, please.
Yeah, so, in follow-up to your comments, Kyle, I would expect that in the future, probably a couple of months down the road, not in time for this council, of course, but your council, we'd have a more fulsome report of exactly what you just said, eligible, ineligible, covered by insurance, what was left outstanding, how that will be paid for through contingency, whatever, to get a total picture of what this crisis or emergency costs us in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. Ryan has been in contact regularly with program officials, and I think on the low end, they were saying eight to nine months for processing. And don't forget that there's a lot of communities in Northwestern Ontario that have been exposed to the same disasters. So, they're going to have a number, you know, probably, what would we say, 10, 12, 14 applications that they're going to probably receive from all the different municipalities that they're going to have to process.
Correct.
And just as a follow-up, I mean, we always talk about climate change, and this may or may not have been the result of climate change, but certainly, there's indications. So, when you get those kind of reports and numbers, that's concrete evidence of what's going to cost taxpayers or the province when it comes to emergencies like this caused by climate change. And we always have climate change in our asset management plan and that. So, in my opinion, this is like concrete evidence of this is what it looks like, and this is what it's going to cost us.
Thanks, Ryan.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Do we have Michael on? All right, then we'll move, we'll move to budget amendments.
Okay, so, the next report we have here is 2021 Budget Amendments. So, this is an annual report of approved budget amendments for the year 2021. These are basically reallocations within the existing 2021 budget. No additional funding was required. This is, this report is, comes on an annual basis and just identifies the projects that have been reallocated.
Yeah, sorry, and I'll just, it's coming back to me, Ryan, now that I read through this. So, there's budget amendments that come to council, right? And then, the Director of Finance has some, you know, authority to do a little bit of moving, you know, where necessary, so, you know, in these small budget items. So, just, these are not ones that you would have seen. These are the ones that are authorized by the Director of Finance as per policy. So, that's just a distinction there, because we were saying sort of before the meeting, we weren't seeing some of the larger value ones that council has authorized. So, that's just the difference here. So, you know, we might have the $6,000 over in one line item, a little bit under in the other, and so, we just make those minor adjustments to make sure the project is funded, and we don't have to bring back every $6,000 budget amendment.
These are also not for 2022. These are last year's.
2021.
And I think the rationale for why it's so late is because they're only now finishing the audited financial statements. We've got a meeting set up, I believe, in two weeks' time, Heather.
That's right.
So, again, that's why, normally, it wouldn't be coming this late. We would have seen this report probably before June, and traditionally, we'd get the audited, but these are for 2021 transactions.
All right, thanks, Ryan. We now have Mike available. All right, Mike, welcome. We'll give you the floor, and you can start your presentation, please.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, members of administration. I apologize for that old time computer crash, and thanks for your patience with me. Very happy to be here with you today to talk to you a little bit about, I guess, the findings and the final results of an exciting project that we worked on with the corporation, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So, I'm just going to share my screen with you. Hopefully, you can all see that. And I'm going to start working my way through it. I just want to remind council and administration and members of the public that the team that we have working on this project included professionals from the firm that I work for, RC Strategies. We were the lead, but we also had support from Scaveth, Memorial Estate Architects as well. And what I wanted to go through with you today is give you an overview of the process that we went through, briefly, talk about what we learned, and then get into the contents of the actual master plan and how we think we could move forward with the direction that's in. So, to start off, just to remind everyone, I guess, that there was a fairly extensive process that we went through in developing the master plan itself. There were two streams of kind of inputs that were gathered along the way. One was what we call research and analysis, and the findings of that research and analysis is included in the State of Parks and Recreation Report, and that's everything from trends in Parks and Recreation to benchmarking, how you kind of compare to other similar municipalities. There's an assessment of your current facilities and parks, and then, a review of all the good planning, I guess, fabric that you have in place right now that helps the corporation move forward and beyond the corporation into the province and nationally as well. The other report, very important in a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, is what we heard from the community. And there's another report called the What We Heard Engagement Report that outlines the findings from quite a few different kind of tactics that we use to listen to your organized groups, your general public, and other facets of your population. And all of that, the research and the engagement came together in kind of providing justification and rationale for the recommendations and the direction that's included in... kind of providing justification and rationale for the recommendations and the direction that's included in the master plan. Just a little bit more here about engagement. So I did mention that we did quite a few different things. This table here outlines the different tactics that we use. I wanted to draw your attention to the, the first one there, the COVID Household Survey, which was mailed out to everyone and gave everyone a chance, every household a chance to provide feedback in a controlled way. We got 319 responses, which is indicative of a 4.5% margin of error, 19 times over 20. So in our work, in our business, that level of response is very good and it it's statistically reliable. And many of the percentages and quotes that you'll see in the plan and obviously in the engagement report are reflective of that COVID Household Survey. But we also had the engagement from groups. We had 20 groups respond to a survey that was sent out to community groups. We had 23 interviews with stakeholders in the community and many of them represented user groups and other interests. We had a user survey of almost 250 responses. And then we had some more general public input opportunities, another online survey, crowdsourcing, listening boards. So in total, we, I'd say confidently suggest that we represent perspectives of over almost 11,000 residents with a little bit of overlap on some of the tactics. So very good engagement and really important for Parks and Recreation Plan because, as you know, you have some guidance, limited guidance, related to legislation around the services area, but it really is dependent upon what your community has had in the past and what your community, your residents and your groups suggested need moving forward. Just in general, what we learned about Canora is that you have an active and committed volunteer community. A very important part of Parks and Recreation in any community is the engagement volunteers that in many cases kind of operate programs to provide opportunities to your residents and their visitors. So you've got a really strong base there, volunteer base in the community. We know that the city believes in the value of recreation in parks because of that, that planning fabric that was in place and the scan that we did of it. And the significant investment that's already been made in facilities and parks and continues to be made. We know that you're surrounded by natural beauty and other broader recreation opportunities. So that's actually, you know, a benefit to, to people that live there and visit there. It's not just what you provide as a city or as a corporation, but it's also, you know, what people can experience outside of your boundaries in immediate vicinity. And we know that most of your indoor facilities and park spaces are in good shape. They're utilized and they're provided at comparable levels to other places. And we also know that you've been aggressive and I'll kind of wrap my presentation up with an overview of how aggressive, but you've been aggressive in pursuing external funding opportunities to lever the the local investment that's been made in parks and recreation. And you're constantly kind of pushing for increases or enhancements to your inventory, which is exciting and kind of makes our work a little bit, a little bit easier planning because a lot of the, I guess, initiatives that we might normally recommend in other instances are actually already happening here. A couple of other things that we, we learned and obviously we had to look at your population and different demographic characteristics, socioeconomic characteristics and how they relate to recreation. But there's there's also, I'd say, three really important kind of terms, initiatives, concepts, themes, if you will, that are facing municipalities right now as they relate to their parks and recreation services. And that's equity, sustainability. So equity being access for all residents. Everybody can benefit from parks and recreation experiences. Some parts of the population arguably can, can benefit even more than others. So equity is about access for all. Sustainability is not necessarily just environmental sustainability, but that's very important right now. But there's also a financial component to sustainability and reconciliation. And reconciliation ties into equity and diversity and inclusion, but it has its own moment right now and it's something that lots of municipalities are actively trying to, to further. And I know that Canora is right now as well. And there are some considerations in the Parks and Recreation Service Area that can help do that. So based on that information, based on what we know about the, the community and all of that research and engagement input that came into play in this process, the first thing that's included in the master plan that's very important for a municipality to have, for a corporation to have is kind of a philosophical foundation for why you provide recreation and parks. And that starts with a goal statement. So you can see the goal statement that's up on the, on the screen here, which outlines kind of why you provide, I guess, or invest in, why you provide these services and invest in them. And it's also supplemented by some intended outcomes. So these outcomes kind of help to articulate what that goal statement really means in three different areas. And within your organization, within the corporation, within the participation that happens in these activities throughout the community, and within the community itself and how these services bring the community together. And I guess, help to lead to having more benefits from that important investment that you, that you made. So the goal statement and these outcome statements kind of explain, again, why you provide parks and recreation, why you invest in it as a municipality. And then we've also provided some guiding principles related to how you might go about providing that service. And these would relate to decision-making at an elected official level for council, but also they provide guidance for states at an administrative level and at a staff level, service delivery level. And they're kind of like important considerations that should be in the back of your mind at all times when thinking about delivering parks and recreation in your community. So you can see there's eight here. I won't go through each one, but these principles and the goal and the outcome statements really set a really strong foundation for moving forward in a parks and recreational service area. One of the things that we put together, and there, there are recommendations beyond infrastructure in the, in the actual master plan, which I'm sure you've seen there. You'll, you'll see materialized. But one of the more important things that we deal with in a plan like this is guidance related to investment in infrastructure, be it maintaining existing infrastructure or enhancing and increasing service levels. So in order to do that, we've come up with action plans for all of your amenities. And I'm first going to explain how we come up with those action plans and then go through a couple of examples for you. So there's really a three-step process that we use in developing action plans for infrastructure. And remember that we have to treat all amenities, all interests equitably or equally in a plan like this. So the first step to developing those action plans is determining whether or not the service level that you have right now is appropriate. So at the end of this step one, we use five criteria to determine, excuse me, whether or not you have, say, I'll use ice arenas as an example, the right amount of ice arenas right now, whether you could sort of warrant or justify thinking about increasing that service level or whether or not you might have possibly more of that service than, than you need and you could consider reducing service levels. That step one is looking at each amenity and understanding really the state of supply and demand for each one of them. The next step is taking those criteria, the same kind of criteria like public input and utilization of existing resources and so on, adding some other, others related to how you might think about prioritizing investment in one amenity over the other. So the first step's about whether we have the right amount. The second step is really about if we have limited resources, where would we focus our effort, our investment in certain amenities over others? And once that prioritization is done, once we know whether we could, you know, justify looking at enhancing service levels or reducing them or maintaining them, then we look at the existing facilities that you have and how you might move forward in a kind of strategic way based on that service level assessment and prioritization. So the results of that three-step process start with a table like this that outlines the indoor and outdoor amenities that were ranked. And you can see, and as is the case in many municipalities, a lot of the outdoor amenities, a lot of the unstructured, spontaneous use, outdoor amenities that you have in the community rose to the top of the prioritization. The ones shaded in green are representing outdoor, the ones shaded in blue represent indoor. And behind each of these is a fairly detailed scoring that was done as well as that service level needs assessment. So this list can, can help you as decision-makers or administration contemplate new projects, adjudicate, I guess, projects that are ideas that might come forward from the public. And I would also say that even though this is a fairly black and white list that has ranked amenities, you know, one through 21 here, it's not that every municipality that we do this for knocks off items one, two and three. It's just a way to look at the amenities in a, in a kind of comparative way so that you have some idea of where your, your priorities might lie. You still have, obviously, the responsibility to make decisions about those investments. And like I said, in some cases, it's not always the top-ranked amenities that, that get those investments initially. So the next few slides give you an example of what the kind of information generated and the thought process behind each of the action plans is for the different amenities that you invest in. And we've chosen three to, to show you an example of. So the first one is arenas. And they start with an example of, you know, where arenas sort of lie in overall priority, what your key facts about arenas are right now and your level of service. And I'll draw your attention to the bottom of this page. And these are the actual pages from the master plan. So I wanted to really relate and, and show the public what, you know, how, how to use the plan and how to read it. But you can see in the bottom left, it says the level of service that you have right now is approximately one arena for about 7,500 people. So there is more information about arenas related to the service level, related to access and distribution across the geography of corporation, about utilization at each of your two existing arenas. And then also information about trends and participation related to ice sports. There's analysis that was done and there's recommendations related to ice arenas specifically. And in this case for arenas, the recommendation is to maintain the current provision ratio of one for 8,000, but also to look at enhancing existing facilities, working with ice user groups to maybe improve allocations and access and utilization, and to monitor participation on an ongoing basis, as is the case for all amenities. So that's arenas. Another example we have here is ball diamonds. Arenas was suggested to maintain the service level. Ball diamonds is actually recommended to reduce the service level slightly, but to improve the quality of what's remaining in your inventory of, of ball facilities. So again, that was the punchline, but same kind of of process that was utilized, same types of considerations that were, were looked at and coming up with that recommendation. And you can see here, it, it says exactly what I said about ball diamonds that to enhance the quality and condition of the ball diamonds that were being, but you could actually decrease the amount of ball diamonds that you have by two and still be better or above average in terms of how you compare in terms of your provision of all diamonds. The last one that I'll explain to you is around tennis and pickleball. So very, you know, important activity for a municipality to provide. Now tennis has always been, pickleball has just recently emerged as a really important activity of Canadians. Same kind of process, same considerations that were looked at related to things like utilization and public input and, and user group input and so on. And the recommendation for tennis and pickleball is to maintain the current service provision level. So the same amount of courts that you have, but to pursue the renewal of some of the courts at the Canora Recreation Centre. And, you know, make sure you continue to do all the good work that you've been doing related to tennis and pickleball so that they can continue to be enjoyed by residents and visitors. So there's a few other, those were meant to give you a, a more detailed look at how conclusions were derived at for those three amenities. There are other amenities that are looked at in the master plan and the following summary statements kind of touch upon the city features of, of those action plans. So you can see for indoor, kind of the, the main recommendations are the ones that I wanted to share with you today are, first off, look at options for expanding the footprint of the fitness centre. I mentioned this already before, but look at pursuing funding that might be available to support the arena facility renewal. And more specifically, look at reducing emissions and environmental impacts of, of ice. And just to confirm that, based on our analysis, we don't think at this point an additional third ice service is required in the community, although it has been explored and looked at. For outdoor recreation, you can see this water, providing a fully accessible playground on the park, looking at playground enhancement and development where free quality play spaces will have a greatest impact. So in the plan, we've done some analysis related to the socioeconomic status of your population and other aspects of your population that I guess, would benefit more from investment in, in playgrounds and outline areas within your geography that, that would suggest that, you know, could, could benefit more from that kind of investment than, than other spaces. To renew the existing ball diamonds and, and enhance quality and condition and to renew the four tennis courts at the recreation centre. There's a few recommendations related specifically to parkland and trails. So first off, to keep, to create sustained budget, budget allocation for trails, parks and beach infrastructure. And that's on the capital and operations side. To develop a strategy producing the environmental impacts of parks operations and some ideas on how that can be done and planned. To continue to enhance the public, public docks and boat launches and, and arenas for infrastructure, obviously a very important part of your, your resident and, and your visitor activity revolves around, around the water. So to continue to focus on that. Also to focus on your tree canopy and then also investigate the development of a trail centre at a strategic location within the, within the city. And that's just to support trail use. And it's actually a newer amenity, trail amenity that is just being explored by a few municipalities in Canada right now. Beyond the infrastructure, I mentioned there's some, some other recommendations in, in the plan that are meant to maybe enhance the current state of parks and recreation from the corporation's perspective. So we've suggested review of the ice allocation and user fee policies. Again, there's probably a way to get, to get more of your existing facilities, even though they are very well utilized. The next is to collaborate with various sport groups in Canora and in the area, including pickleball, hockey and ball groups, but even others to look at sport tourism and tournament hosting. And then there's also some specific guidance in the plan itself for your program delivery efforts or what you invest in in terms of providing specific activities. So the types of programs that look to be in, on your excess demand or that residents would like to see, but, but don't feel they have access to right now or enough access are drop-in youth programs, youth biking, BMX, pre-registered fitness and wellness, Nordic activities and community gardening. So that's just to provide some guidance. You can never be everything to everybody in a parks and rec context because there's always going to be a passion and, and interest that you don't provide or that you don't provide enough of. But this is meant to just give some guidance related to, to that, that programming or actual opportunity development effort that the corporation has. So I mentioned that I was going to close on some of the successes that So I mentioned that I was going to close on some of the successes that the corporation has had in securing funding for a variety of different parks and recreation amenities. And this is an impressive list, and I have to commend your administration and the role that council played in pursuing this funding, because I also have to say, not just on a per capita basis, but even just on an overall number of pockets of funding received in the last two years. I don't know any of the municipalities that I've worked in or that our team works in that has been as successful as you have here. So I want to commend the administration for this, but you can see a very significant amount of money has been pursued and, I guess, secured by the corporation to support investment in parks and recreation, almost 10 million over the last two years. So I would call for a round of applause here for you, but it also suggests that moving forward, some of the communities that are in the plan will probably have similar leveraging opportunities to all of the ones that are listed here. So in terms of the conclusion and next steps, a plan like this is not meant to tie anybody's hands, is not meant to circumvent any decision-making, it's meant to help guide decision-making and action, or be a reference point for decisions that are made. Like I said before, you know, we gave you a list of one, two, three, four, five amenities that we think have priority, but that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to knock the top two off first and then the next two or three. It's meant to just be a reference point, so that you know if you decide to invest in one of the amenities that's lower in the list, that there could be, based on that logic, there could be other areas that deserve investment too. Implementation starts with the acceptance of that goal statement and the outcomes, articulating again, why you provide services, but also the principles around how you provide these services. And once you accept those, integrate them kind of into your day-to-day, it'll help to not only ease, I think, decision-making and action, or provide clarity to that, but also to explain to the community, explain to whoever's asking, why you invest in what some people would say a subjective service like parks and recreation. And it can help align partnerships and all of your decision-making and action moving forward. There are specific recommendations in the plan that we've suggested some would happen in the first three years of implementation, some might be more medium or long-term in terms of horizon, but we've tried to sort of chop that up a little bit for Stace and his team and for council and the corporation, because if you try to tackle everything that's in there next year, unfortunately, you fail because there's too much. So we tried to provide some guidance related to timing, recommendations. And then finally, we did outline some metrics, how we think you could measure performance moving forward with this parks and recreation service area. So monitoring progress is important. It's not just important to demonstrate that you've achieved or arrived at some value from this planning exercise specifically, but it's also important for just thinking of all parks and recreation in general, again, achieving as much benefit as you can, as possible, and moving forward in a way that enhances the current state, that improves where you're at right now. And that's not necessarily meant to suggest you need to spend more to do that. A lot of the recommendations that are in here are meant to just improve the current state, which is already very good, but improve the current state moving forward. So that's the end of the slide deck, Your Worship. And I guess I would turn it back to yourself and handle any questions that might come up. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Counsel? Okay, Mike, oh, go ahead, Counselor Smith.
Well, I just want to say that I'm very impressed with the participation in the community, and Canora has always been that way. The community has always come out, they have vested interest in the numbers that come out and the participation in any kind of planning that we do has always impressed me in this community. So it tells me that the community is vested in this report, and I think that it's a real good blueprint for moving forward, and it's certainly doable. So thank you for your work on this.
Counselor Van Wellingham.
Thank you. Yeah, that was interesting.
Excuse me, Counselor. Can you hear Mike?
Yeah, thanks for your report there, Mike. That included quite a bit. Unless I missed it, I don't see anything about the curling clubs at all on there. I realize it's, they're private clubs, but they do share a lot of, well, Kuwaiton or any of there has a common roof and, I believe, and a common wall. There's, we talk about sport tourism and tournament hosting. Both the curling clubs do a lot of that, and we put forward different grant applications for the curling clubs. So I think we're really intertwined here, and I believe it should be some mention of that if somebody's thinking of moving to Canora, looking at all the different recreation facilities and that, they should at least be able to see the curling clubs there.
Yeah, thank you for that, for bringing that up. And there is mention of other amenities in the master plan and in the research that was conducted. I just highlighted those three for the purposes of demonstrating kind of how recommendations were arrived at. So I would say that some of that subject matter around curling is included. And it's also, I would suggest that it's harder to create more stringent recommendations around amenities that you may invest in that you don't have control of. So in some cases, those amenities that are in that category are, they're definitely outlined in the inventory. There are some of the other recommendations that are included in a master plan and any master plan applied to them in terms of partnerships and in terms of even some of those intended outcomes and principles to deal with the relationship that you have with the figures that provide the service. So curling is included in the scope of the research and some of the direction that's included in the master plan, I just didn't highlight it today. But thanks for bringing that up and for the other counselor that made the comment about engagement. I would say, I'm not sure if I said this in the presentation or not, but the level of engagement that we had, the level of kind of input that we received from groups and the general public in this case was definitely, you know, on the higher end. If I was to try to compare this to other municipalities that would do similar exercises in, so I would agree with the other counselor's comments about residents getting out and participating, and I think especially in a subject matter like parks and recreation that many have opinions on, the amount of engagement that we're seeing is impressive. Thank you.
Counselor Goss?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. This is a great snapshot of where we are and a good plan for where we're heading. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and I'm sure every counselor in the room has heard this before, thank you for your support, the idea of supporting soccer. The soccer is a major sport in Canora, is run by a private organization, and any help from the city would certainly be welcome, especially after a few years of COVID difficulties. So a great snapshot, and thank you very much for reporting so well on the successes, because I think our staff have done an exceptional job this year. Our next job is to find the funding to follow through on the rest of it. Thanks again, Mike. Very well done.
So Mike, I've got a couple of questions. When I read the report, you identified facilities and then recommendations. You know, we've got two arenas, we need to maintain two arenas. We have X number of ball diamonds. The one that I didn't see a recommendation for was when we looked at tennis and pickleball courts. You identified the tennis courts, I believe it was four at the rec center, two at Portage Bay, are pickleball clubs. And then your recommendation, there was no mention of the two tennis courts in Kuwaiton. Is it rec, I don't even know if they're used, if they're maintained, but it doesn't seem to be identified what the recommendation is going forward. Was there a recommendation?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Was there a recommendation on the Kuwaiton tennis courts?
The recommendation is to maintain the current service level that you currently provide for tennis and pickleball. So it is to maintain the existing inventory that you have. That's not to say that you need to continue to provide them at the exact same locations that you do right now in general, but it is to maintain that service level. So where, there has been some specific recommendations made related to location of, in tennis's case, the renewal of the courts at the recreation center, but in other areas of the community where maybe the information that we gathered or the direction that we received wasn't as strong, we've tried to be a little bit more general in the plan and just say that the level of service should be maintained, but leave it to, I guess, administration and possibly council to be a little bit more creative as to where that inventory is currently provided. So there isn't anything specific to those courts in general, but there is an overarching kind of direction set to maintain service level, maintain the amount of amenity that you have right now for those two activities.
All right. The counselors, Goss and Van Wellingham, were, you know, they were very fortunate. Not only do we have these wonderful recreation and parks facilities owned and maintained by the city, but we also have, you know, as Counselor Goss identified, the soccer field, which is used for soccer programs, plus our two high school football programs, the curling clubs, and then we're very fortunate, Mount Evergreen is becoming a very popular destination. You know, they've just got huge funding to upgrade cross-country skiing, they've got the snow park where the, you know, you take your tubing, and they've got the downhill skill. So we're very, very fortunate that not only what we have, but what groups within our community run and maintain. And for the one, I think my favorite one was slide 25. You know, I understand my council team around, that are on the campaign trail have been berated about nothing gets done in Canora. I hope you take this slide and use it to your advantage over the next two weeks, because it clearly indicates, and this is just the funding, this isn't, this isn't necessarily the capital total, this is just the funding that the city of Canora has accessed. So it's a clear indication of the successes that have come over, and these are just the last two years. So congratulations to staff and to this council for supporting these initiatives. So, Mike, the last thing is Kyle would like to have some comments.
Yeah, well, I was going to echo Mayor Raynard a little bit, you know, so very happy to be presenting this to council, you know, it was important to us to get it in front of this council, because this council's articulated a very strong vision around parks and recreation, and you can see that with the number of improvements in the community, and also, you know, council said go out and find funding for the service area, and so that's what we've done. So we were really pleased to bring this in before the election during this council term. The second thing that I just wanted to touch on is, I think sometimes there's a perception when you bring in an outside consultant that, you know, it's sort of like a rotisserie chicken, you put it in the oven, you go away and do something else, and then you come back and there's a fully formed plan there. I just really want to speak to the efforts of in particular Heather and Stace and Josh Nelson on this. At every step, you know, almost weekly or bi-weekly, you know, you're reviewing the feedback that you've received from the public, you're going through the recommendations. It's a real collaborative effort with the consultant, and I've seen that, and I know how much effort that those three staff members in particular have put into this plan. And, you know, sometimes we had some assumptions about some areas, and RC and their partners came back and said, well, you know, that, based on what we're seeing, the data doesn't really bear that out. Or, you know, RC said, actually, you know, it might be better to put some attention over there. And so through that, I think we've gotten a really good plan here that's, you know, collaborative and it's free of bias, and we've really looked at the evidence and the information being provided to try and get the best result possible for these, for this community. So again, I just want to highlight the effort of the team and of council to go out and secure that funding. Very proud and very happy to get shovels in the ground and get those projects moving. Stace, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I just want to thank Mike and Heather, Josh as well, and council for that matter. It's a good point, Mayor, that last sheet just shows how much we got through funding. The city has committed anywhere from 30 to 50% in addition to that. So that's a very robust capital program going forward to help to help to close the gaps on some of these amenities. And Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you and your firm, so thank you.
All right, then. We, thanks, Mike, and I believe we're dealing with this later on in today's meeting.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. And I would like to extend a thanks to council and administration, and specifically Stace and Josh and Heather as well for all the input that you provided and for letting us be part of this important planning exercise for the corporation. So thank you very much, and again, I apologize for my computer problems that I had this morning. So best of luck with the rest of your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the December date change for the meetings, and I'll turn that over to, excuse me, Heather.
There's just an administrative conflict on the December 13th regular committee of a whole meeting date, so administration's requesting the meeting be changed to December 6th for regular cow, and then council will remain on the 20th, so there will be that one week split between the dates.
Any concerns? All right, that will come forward. We move into community services. First item is the Coney Island maintenance contract. Stace?
Thank you. So council report before you is a recommendation related to the city entering into, sorry, approving a bylaw to authorize an agreement between the city and Jennifer Shaw for the purposes of providing operations and maintenance at the Coney Island Park. This was a competitive process. There were two respondents to that process. Services under this agreement include daily cleaning, weekly garbage removal, lawn and park maintenance, dock oversight, operation concession, facility cleaning and oversight. And the successful proponent was Jennifer Shaw. It is a three-year deal, and the breakdown of the revenue is there at the table, and these values will be included in our operating budgets going forward.
Counselor Goss?
Yeah, I have no issue with the contract, et cetera. I just wonder, because we've had such a vicious year weather-wise, and Coney Island Beach has been, in some places washed out, and I understand that the new boardwalk is in place, but has there been any, do we have any plans to remediate that beach, or is it, is it, is there much work to be done to remediate that beach so that we can turn it back into what it was?
I'll have to come back to you with that. I haven't heard anything in terms of bad erosion as a result of that. Usually what happens is the sand washes out, but then it pushes back in, so I can come back with that. But you're right, the docking infrastructure now is almost complete there, and it looks fantastic.
Thank you.
Next item then is, sorry, my, yep, I just lost where it was. I just need the report in for me. Yeah, thanks for giving us 255 pages. All right, Stace, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Thank you. This report is related to a recommendation that council hereby accepts the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. By way of background, council would have approved a $100,000 budget amendment to be funded through contingency reserve for this project. Per our procurement policy, we went through an extensive expression of interest process. As noted by Mike Roma through the presentation, the project involved extensive community engagement and user engagement. That includes doing a thorough review of all of the existing documents, strategic documents that we would have had in the process to, you know, land on a go-forward plan that encompasses all that engagement and review. It also included benchmarking, which I think is very important. We always wonder how we're doing relative to others. I think it's important we understand and look at best practices to help guide us going forward. So the beauty of this report is, you know, there's So the beauty of this report is, you know, there's a lot of action items there. They're built in such a way as there are medium, long, short and long-term objectives. And what it allows administration and council to do is, as we look at planning going forward, whether it be operating or capital, allows us to look at things that are brought forward and always keep all of this guiding documentation in mind and help us make better decisions going forward.
Council? All right, I just had one comment. When we talked about the $10 million, those were our projects. If you think about other projects like the Rotary Club Splash Park, that was, you know, their fundraising, their government grants. The Peace Park is another big, so the partnerships along with the funding and Central Park is a third where, you know, large amounts of money went out to redo Central. That was a community fundraising effort. So where, when you reflect back, our community is strong. The people are, take great pride in their parks and recreation, and we're very fortunate. So again, take that with you on the campaign trail. So we're good with this? This will come forward on Friday for ratification then? Stace, I think you're still on, right, with the application NOHFC?
Correct. So this is report is for application to Northern Ontario Heritage Fund Corporation and Fednor for Phase Two of McLeod Park. And the recommendation is that council hereby approve an application to NOHFC in the amount of $558,000, $8,123 for Phase Two of rehabilitation and renovation related to McLeod Park. And that council approves an application to Fednor in the amount of 500, in the same amount. And this will represent Phase Two and the final portion of the McLeod Park redevelopment. By way of background, the City of Canora 2022 to 27 Strategic Plan and the 2021 Five-Year Economic Development Tourism Plan prioritize implementation of Harborfront Business Development Plan, specifically McLeod Park and the Husky, the Muskie Zones. There was an extensive level of engagement with the community, and a plan was created. The City of Canora was successful in Phase One in receiving 90% funding for the refurbishment of Husky to Muskie, and that work is largely completed, pleaded with the exception of the McLeod Park portion. Through working with our landscape architect and engineer, there was some additional items that were identified that we felt worked well with the Phase Two type project. And again, once complete, this would have, show the completion of Zones One and Two of the Harborfront Business Development Plan. In terms of a budget impact, of course, we're going into our 2023 capital plan, but the expectation would be that we would take $50,000 from that tax revenues with an additional $74,026 to come from Future Land Development Reserve to fund the city's 10% contribution to this project. Do you have any questions?
Councillor Goss, please.
Yep, congratulations again on the first, the previous one. I'm hoping that we can follow through with another 90% funding. And we'd like to point out to people that the municipal accommodation tax is funding a lot of these projects, $50,000 here going. And remind people that this is not residential tax money. This is, this is money that's collected from visitors staying in our hotel rooms. So that makes a, that makes a huge difference to pretty much everything we can, we can fund. And to draw what I'm seeing here now from the Future Development Fund, another $74,000, and remind people that this, some of this money is collected from sale of city properties. The $2 million that we received for the sale of Town Island to the Nature Contributing Centre of Canada, which guarantees that Town Island will stay in the public domain forever, that $2 million is going to make a big difference for projects like this. So we're not just drawing from our residential tax dollars on this. And that's got to be appreciated by the community. If we can, if we can develop our community so much more with outside funding, all the more power to us. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that. Again, those are two policies that members are on this table set in place. The, that was a, that was our decision that when we first started looking at selling major pieces of property, that the money did not go, it went back into reinvestments within the community. And same with the mat tax. You know, this is just now showing the benefits of those decisions. So again, congratulations to this council and the one prior. All right, so Stace, you're presenting on the Rural Immigration Pilot?
Yes, thank you. So this is a follow-up to the deputation that was done by Randy Nichol, and it relates to an initiative taken by the Rural and Northern Immigration through the government of Canada. And just, there's a lot here. Essentially, in 2019, when a pilot study was chosen, it was chosen, as Randy said, for five different municipalities. The City of Canora was excluded from that. More recently, they would have gone through a process where they evaluated the municipalities served under this program. And yet again, the City of Canora was excluded from this, as noted by Randy. Immigration plays an important part of employment here, and that studies will show that we need 7,100 immigration, new immigrants coming to Ontario, in rural Ontario, in the next number of years. So it's important that the City of Canora be included in this. So we have spoken to the executive director of the program, and this is the first step in terms of us going to them and hopefully getting the boundaries expanded to include the City of Canora by way of petition.
Any questions or comments? My question is, in the recommendation, do we normally put who we're going to send this to?
Yeah. I can add that.
We missed that.
And would we include Minister Rickford even though it's a federal thing? Just for information?
Sure.
So who we had sent to Eric to, and all these other organizations? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
You look perplexed.
I wanted to ask, I was like, but.
Commission across the floor.
I'll cross each to the other side because there's nobody here.
All right, we will, we'll do our roundtable then. I'll start with councillor Van Wellingham.
I have nothing to say, thanks.
All right, councillor Goss?
Yes, I'm going to reference something here from, we've recently seen a study that outlines that perhaps Statistic Canada is significantly undercounting Indigenous population in Canora by a factor of possibly anywhere from two to four times. And being as our funding, social services funding is based on numbers, all of these numbers are, all of these funding applications are based on statistics. I think we're seriously, I think we're seriously underfunded in some areas, and it also might have an impact on our OPP budget. So I'd really like to dig in deeper onto this, into this, and I would suggest that the next council take a really serious look. Because if we're seriously underfunded, we already know that we're knee-deep here in issues that we can barely control. And if the numbers prove us right or prove to be right, then we're seriously in need of better funding, better and more funding.
Sorry, councillor Goss, that's the first I've heard of that. Can you share with me what you have on there?
I most certainly will.
Perfect, awesome. That'd be great if I could just have that referenced here.
The point, the point being is that some of these people are counted in their home communities. They're living here for as much as a full year and are not being, not being counted. So again, it's a, it's a stats number, but as we all know, any kind of funding is based on statistics.
Thank you, councillor Goss. Councillor Smith?
Yeah, and I also concur with what councillor Goss said, that that study will be very important to the City of Canora. And I, I concur that we should be following up on it because it could have some meaningful implications for, as councillor Goss said, OPP costing, social services. So I really think it's an important item for staff to follow up on. So thanks, Kyle, for committing to that. The other thing I want to ask is if, Kyle, if staff could give an update on the, where we're at with the Rural Roads study and going forward? Thank you.
Sure, I will let Marco speak to that.
Sure, we have retained Statitech at Woodup to conduct that specific study. And as of, as of today, they've come out a couple of times in Canora to actually perform their Rural Route surveys. So they've actually driven the roads. They've had a quick discussion with the road supervisor as of, as of yet. So they're, we're hoping to get some type of report back later on this year in terms of their findings and hopefully some priorities and some recommendations on how to deal with some of the roads north of the bypass. So it is definitely a work in progress. And like I said, we're hoping to receive some type of report later on this year.
Thanks, Marco. And it's really encouraging to hear that we've hired a consulting firm that's done a lot of work in our area and they're, you know, professionals. So we're certainly committed to looking at our Rural Road situation. So thanks.
And those conversations certainly will inform the 2023 capital budget as well.
Okay. Thanks.
So you're good?
I'm good.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Poirier?
Nothing. Unless you wanted me to talk about, or do you want me to talk about the meeting?
Sure, if you wanted to, yeah, sure.
Okay, so date slips my mind here and that, but it was about a week ago where we had a meeting with Pioneer Construction about the ongoing concerns related to asphalting some of our streets and some of the projects that are almost completed. So myself, Heather, and Marco, and your, the municipal engineer, sorry, his name.
Project engineer David.
Yeah, met with representative from Pioneer, and it was a very good, very frank and good conversation. They acknowledged that they're behind in some of the areas. Some of the projects maybe could have been started earlier. But there was assurances, I guess, weather permitting, because that's out of everybody's hands, that these projects would, would be completed. And they did bring up also, and it seems to be a common theme or thread with everybody you speak to, about lack of manpower. They're, they're short-staffed. But they did take on a lot of, they added to their plate substantially this year with a lot of different contracts. So there was some assurances and there was questions asked about scheduling and timetabling and specifically around the railway street project. You know, where, where do they see that being by, you know, the end of October or thereabouts? So there was some assurances that they would get it done and that. But again, I think we're all looking at the weather and wondering, you know, how long are we going to get away with this before it becomes too cold? Or, you know, there's snow, I shouldn't say that, snow on the ground. But anyways, it was, it was a good, it was a good meeting. It was open, honest, and frank, and the city's concerns were raised, I think appropriately at the meeting. So I don't know if any Heather or Marco want to add to that.
Yeah, I think a couple of takeaways, I guess, in that meeting were, this year's been a bit of a peculiar year. As we know, it was a late start. It wasn't as early as last year in terms of the spring startup. We were fortunate in 2021 to actually start almost two to three weeks earlier than normal. And the weather, I guess, hasn't cooperated much yet this year either with the amount of rain and delays and whatnot through the contract or not just here in Canora, but throughout their construction sites that they run through all Northwest Ontario in terms of Pioneer's coverage and their, the works they perform throughout Northwest Ontario. So those are a couple of key takeaways that were, you know, provided back to us saying it's not just Canora here that has been kind of in the backseat in terms of getting maybe later paving than normal, but it's throughout Northwest Ontario just with the amount of delays and whatnot. And like Andrew said, they've taken on a few extra projects here in terms of airport paving in Thunder Bay and Canora that's added to their plate like they had indicated, which is kind of, I guess, filled their plate a lot more than more, you know, in the past and typically years that they've, they've taken on work. So those are some of the takeaways that we had out of that meeting.
Good? All right.
Just a question, and I ask that this be discussed during, during the meeting with Pioneer. I don't know a lot about paving, but I've learned a lot. And my understanding is that laying hot pavement in cold weather results in an inferior product and rutting and potholes further on. And I think that that needs to be explored because if that is happening, and we are seeing late paving when the ground is cold, that's costing us down the road. And if that is in fact true and is happening, I think we have to investigate that and ensure that our tenders specify the paving occurs when conditions are conducive to ensuring that that product has longevity and we're not going back and spending money repaving or doing potholes as a result of that late, that late paving. I've heard that over the years from several people in the industry, and I think that we need to, we need to look at that.
I just wanted to confirm that our, our contracts do have all that language in place. So it really comes down to sometimes judgment calls and just, you know, basically, we don't always pave in October here. The two Octobers that I've been here prior to this year, we haven't done any paving. You know, we've done some paving in December before, and it's, Marco tells me it's some of the best pavement that we have. You know, the, the temperature is a factor, and it can contribute to issues. You know, paving is done between May and November, so not everybody is going to get their paving done in July and August, right? Somebody has to, somebody has to happen late in the season. We have a bit of a disadvantage because there's an asphalt plant in Canora, so it seems like they sort of, they travel out and do their work and then sort of work their way back in. I think it's a little bit of groundhog day for Marco. A new director comes in, or a new project engineer comes in, or a new CAO comes in and brings up this issue. And I just want to say that the team has done a lot of work trying to figure out how might we address that issue? If we put more work in, would that attract more bidders? Would that attract, you know, a company to come in and do more work for us? We haven't found that. We actually did over $3.5 million. We have $3.5 million worth of paving in the budget this year. We still just got Pioneer as a bidder. So, you know, I know, I've asked and previous directors and project engineers, I've asked Marco specifically, you know, let's put out our tenders early. So we've, we've sort of gotten better with that over the past couple of years. We've put more projects into the budget to try and entice. There are some factors that were, that are working against us geographically. You know, there's labor shortages. Marco's talked about some of the weather issues that we've had this year. I just, I wanted to spell this notion that the city is paving on Halloween every year because that's not the case. That does happen. Sometimes it's 10, 12 degrees on Halloween, and it's not contributing to an inferior product at all. Sometimes we do have to make judgment calls for whatever reason because we have a road, you know, taken right down to the base that's been prepped, and it would actually be more disadvantageous to leave that over the winter. So what I could tell you is, you know, prior to this issue being raised over the past week or so, and prior to the meeting with Pioneer, administration is having regular conversations about that. You know, I flagged this for Marco a couple of weeks ago, and I said, you know, I think it's time for us to sit down and have a conversation with Pioneer and let them know what we're hearing from the public and what we're hearing from council because I think it's important. And we're going to continue to try and work and nurture that relationship and try and make the best decisions that we can. But at the end of the day, like I said, somebody's going to get paving in May when the rain is falling, somebody's going to get paving in November when temperatures are lower. We have had conversations with Pioneer about why we would like to maybe, you know, move up a little bit. But it's also worth mentioning, the whole Highway 17 project was done in the summer this year. Second Street was done. We've had, we've had other projects that have been done in the middle of the summer. It took good results. And there's also concerns. I am not an engineer, for those of you that aren't aware of that, but Marco- for those of you that aren't aware of that, but Marco shared with me as well, you can lay pavement and it's too hot. And that can have an inferior effect on the product. So we're always really, you know, I have 100% confidence in the staff that they know what conditions are best. And they know, and I will share, Mr. Malour, our project engineer, I have been outside his office on numerous occasions when he was calling Pioneer on a daily basis, when are you coming? When are you coming? When are you coming? When are you coming? So I feel very strong, strongly that our team is doing the best that they can to try and get that paving done at a time that's a little bit more advantageous. And it's, it's hard for us to know what the weather's going to look like in two or three weeks. We know that based on our conversation with Pioneer, that Pioneer's doing the best that they can, and we're doing the best that we can. You know, I'll throw it back to Marco one more time, but you know, if we were going to get to a point in the third or fourth week of October and weather was really disadvantageous, then we would make a judgment call at that time.
Yeah, usually in, in the month of October is where, you know, we could get an early fall, we could get a late fall. So we're always looking at, you know, the week events in terms of weather forecasts and whatnot and discussing the availability of the paving contractor to do the work. So we do have kind of three alternatives going forward when we look at a specific project. And one is to, to fore, or forego the paving, like you said, for certain instances where we're not meeting temperatures and the weather is just not going to be cooperating. So we have left certain streets and gravel roads over the winter, which isn't obviously our first option, but we have done that in the past. Our second option, if we're looking at two lifts of asphalt, is to put the, the one lift down and wait the following year to do the second lift in more favorable conditions and delay the final completion of that project. Or make a decision to fully complete the project in that year based on, you know, sound judgment and whatnot and looking at forecasts and the availability and perhaps the inconvenience to the public or the road users leaving it in some substandard condition for the winter, which especially in a gravel condition leaves a lot of maintenance and complaints and potholing and whatnot of the gravel surface for quite a substantial period of time. Not so much in the winter, I guess, when it's frozen during snow conditions, but more so in the following spring. As we all know, that paving crews usually don't start up till about or after May long weekend. So there's a substantial period of time from, you know, the first snowmelt to when that road would actually get paved the following year. So, you know, there's several weeks or months where a gravel surface could sit in, in a poor condition that we're continuously going back, just like potholes that are wet and hard to repair during the spring. If you leave it in gravel, it is a maintenance, ongoing maintenance period of time and a lot of expense that goes into it from that perspective too, until it gets its final lift of asphalt. So we take all those kinds of scenarios and, and make our best judgment at the time of year and, you know, going into October, November on whether we proceed or fully complete a paving project or leave it in deferred for the following year.
Could you speak a little more just about the language that we do have in the contracts? I know Counselor Smith alluded to that, so I think it's important that we disclose.
Yeah, right now, we, we follow the Ontario Provincial Standards. So that's a, a standard that's put out by the Ministry of Transportation. So it does have certain aspects in it on when you can, when and how cold and what kind of weather conditions you could pave on gravel, which very differently from when you're paving on, on existing asphalt again. So there are certain criteria that's, that needs to be met in terms of temperatures and weather conditions, and whether that temperature is rising or falling or whatnot for that specific day of paving. So there is a, a guidance document and specifications that are used that I'm assuming that many, if not all municipalities are following in Ontario through that Ontario provincial standard.
So, well, thank you for that. And my, my concern is that we are not wasting scarce taxpayers' dollars. And infrastructure is really critical in this community, and the infrastructure deficit is immense. So for me, it's all about not throwing good money after bad, so always being able to mitigate some of the issues around late paving. So thanks, Marco.
All right. So my comments today are going to be addressed to this council, especially the members that are on the campaign trail. You've been taking it on the chin, and it's totally unwarranted. When we reflect back on what, you know, we look at the Recreation Master Plan today, and that's one small aspect. Over the last two weeks, I've been at five major events. And the majority of people now that come up and talk to me at those events are quite satisfied with, they recognize that we've done a good job over the last four years. Canora today has changed dramatically. You talk about the infrastructure deficit. We've addressed a lot. We've made changes to address that. It's interesting, when you look back in, I'll go back to when Counselor Goss joined Counselor Smith and Counselor Rick Millen eight years ago in council. The tax rate today is lower than it was eight years ago. And I'll provide my fellow counselors with those numbers so that you can use those. I really, you look at the difference in our community, and, and some of it is not our doing. Some of it is, you know, every government gets land-baseded no matter what you do. But if we look at our relationship with this provincial government and the progressive conservatives since they came into power, the addition to the jail, which will create, you know, more jobs in the community. They brought Ontario Northline to your community, which is an enhanced bus service. You know, we, you look at the money that's flowed in because of our grants, the premier coming here. We did Railway Street. We did First Street. We did the Roundabout. Those are all because of money that came into the community. We took the government, the federal government doubled the gas tax money. We reinvested that all into bridges and roads. We made decisions where we no longer borrow from ourselves. We went out and borrowed at a much lower rate. Those are sound business decisions. We talked about, Counselor Goss brought it before, about, you know, these different policies we brought into play where we're taking money, making sound decisions. And, you know, that money, I, I look at the development. One of the biggest issues, it's not the red tape when you come to development, the red tape. Provincial legislation dictates that you have to go through the building process, the planning process. Those are our processes. One of the biggest impediments is what it costs to bring infrastructure into a community. We live on the shield. So we made decisions as a developer, if you've got a sound business plan, we will assist you in those costs. So we've actually done things to enhance and make it better as we move forward. So when you're out there, you should be proud of what we've done collectively as a team. And you should be proud of the team, our SLT, and the guidance we have. I'm leaving knowing that, I'm proud of what we accomplished, and I'm proud of what we're leaving behind for, because I really believe Canora's going to thrive. So thanks to all of you. And with that, resolution two adjourned, please.
So resolution number two, moved by myself, second by Counselor Poirier, that this meeting now be adjourned to a closed session at whatever time it is.
10:37.
10:37. And further, pursuant to Section 239 of Municipal Act 2001 as amended, authorization is hereby given for committee to move into a closed session to discuss items pertaining to the following. Number one, educating and training members of council. One matter, CAO updates.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are adjourned.